Second.
You are live.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting for Tuesday, October the 11th. Municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wyandotte and by the Anishinaabe nations, including ancestors of the Chipewa of the Tantons First Nation. It's also the traditional territory of the Hoodnissoni, Atawandran, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Does any member of council have any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Deputy Mayor Marks?
We'll declare conflict of interest on possession item two. And because I was spoke to it in Elden County today, so clear conflict here.
Thank you. Do you read the motion concerning the minutes, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the minutes of the regularly meeting of council dated Monday, September the 26, 2022 be adopted.
Any questions? Not? Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Winn is absent this evening. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We have two items of correspondence requiring action. One is for the Dickens Day weekend, so that's the first one that's coming up. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report CE 1122 re-special events application, Port Stanley-Dickens Day weekend be received as information, and that council approve the special events permit for the 2022 Port Stanley-Dickens Day weekend to be held from Friday, November the 25th at 6:00 PM to Sunday, November the 27th at 6:00 PM, subject to the following recommending conditions. Organizers comply with the special events policy as adopted by council. Insurance be provided by the horse-drawn carriage company for the event in the amount of $5 million, naming the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. Council approve an exemption to bylaw 2714, being a bylaw to provide for the licensing and regulation of various businesses in Central Elgin, as the provision of horse-drawn carriage rides is associated with the special event, and the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt? Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Then the second one under there is the special event for the Belmont Santa Claus Parade. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Cook, that report CE 1222 special events application, 2022 Belmont Santa Claus Parade be received as information, and that council approve the special events permit for the 2022 Belmont Santa Claus Parade to be held on Sunday, December the 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM, subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers comply with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million, naming the municipality of Central Elgin and the county of Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. Approval from the county of Elgin regarding the temporary road closure of Belmont Road for the parade, and the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none? Hearing none? Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Moving on to correspondence for information, we have two items of correspondence. Does anyone have any questions about either of them? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that correspondence items number one and number two be received as information and filed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Moving on now to the Central Elgin Planning Office, and our first one is CEP 5022. This is for a draft plan of subdivision on Canterbury Place. You've all read the report. You have any questions that you wish to ask Mr. McClure? Seeing and hearing none, would you read the motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report CEP 5022, re-application for draft plan of subdivision approval, proposed draft conditions, Canterbury Place Extension, Carwood, Ontario Limited be received as information, and further that council approve the attached municipal draft plan conditions to be forwarded to the acting manager of planning for the county of Elgin with the request that they be included in the county's decision on the proposed draft plan of subdivision.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the next report, which is on the Eagle Ridge, Phase Two. Does anyone have any questions before I have the motion read? Kevin, you have your hand up. You wish to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to bring to attention that in the report itself with the conditions, there was a admission that I guess staff is going to be requesting, I guess, council to add through this, I guess, resolution. The one being, it was spoken to within the original staff report. It deals with the woodlot areas that were cleared as part of the previous, I guess, Phase One approvals. The one condition that was admitted accidentally was that the owner at its expense provide compensatory plantings for trees removed from the natural heritage designated lands, as identified in Central Elgin Official Plan Schedule E dated February 8, 2013. So that's consistent with the, I guess, requirement or request that the municipality include compensatory plantings when woodlots in that are cleared for development.
Thank you. So that is in, yes, Mrs. Wilson tells me that's in the motion, so I will have you, we don't have a mover and seconder, though. No, not yet.
I'll move.
Counselor Crevitt moves. Counselor Rowe seconds. Would you read the motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The motion reads, by Counselor Crevitt, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report CEP 5122 reapplication for draft plan of subdivision approval, proposed draft conditions Eagle Ridge Phase Two, 2561603, Ontario Limited be received as information, and that council approve the attached municipal draft plan conditions to be forwarded to the acting manager of planning for the county of Elgin with the request that they be included in the county's decision on the proposed draft plan of subdivision, and further that the owner at its expense provide compensatory planting for trees removed from the natural heritage designated lands as identified in Central Elgin Official Plan Schedule E dated February the 8th, 2013.
Just one question that I would have, Mr. McClure. Are the trees going to be planted in that subdivision somewhere, or is there another area that they're planting trees to compensate for the area they cleared?
So you, Madam Mayor, at this point, I don't believe that there's a specific area that has been identified, but through the, I guess, the draft conditions and approvals process, that'd be something that staff would work out with the applicant.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're on to the third one, which is the removal of part lot control for lot 67, 68, 69, registered plan 251. I assume everyone has read the report. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report CEP 5222 reapplication for removal of part lot control, part of lots 67, 68, and 69, registered plan 251, municipality of Central Elgin be received as information.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Excuse me, yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now we're on to the fourth one, which is 250 Colburn Street in Port Stanley. Does anyone have questions or comments on the report as presented? Counselor Fair, go ahead.
Wasn't this the one that they requested it being extended?
Uh huh. A year ago, they requested it to be extended.
I thought it was just a recent one that they requested.
They have requested it again, yes.
Madam Mayor, through you to the rest of council, an email was circulated today indicating that the agent for the applicant had submitted a deferral request and outlined some particulars in that email, and it was sent to all of council today.
Right. And as I say, a year ago, there was a request to defer it as well, because we were concerned about no parking and the lot coverage, et cetera. Counselor Fair?
So are we, am I correct in assuming that first we're going to vote on whether we're going to extend it or not?
Go ahead, Mr. Shipway.
To you, Madam Mayor, to council, just speaking about this report and the request for deferral that came in today, I think if Mr. McClure has anything to add, but at this point, staff have reviewed the request, and staff are comfortable with the recommendation that's before council, moving forward as is without considering the deferral. However, that is council's discretion. Staff would simply say the recommendation before council would still be the staff recommendation on this matter.
Mr. McClure, did you wish to speak to this at all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing further to, I guess, Mr. Shipway, other than to say that this, I guess, these issues that have been raised and were part of the staff report that's before you today have been known to the applicant since the original consultation meeting process back in April 2021. We had presented a bylaw that at the October 25th, 2021 council meeting, a sort of public meeting, that the applicant had prepared, that they were satisfied that would meet the proposal. Ultimately, staff has raised the same concerns with respect to conformity to the official plan designation, the lack of parking. A number of items have been resolved through the process since the original public meeting. However, the outstanding parking concerns remain, as well as conformity to the official plan.
Thank you. Counselor Fair?
My, on this, over the last four years of, more probably, we've always said we want to listen to the taxpayer, and especially over the last two weeks, and I'm just thinking, why would we not allow them to have the extension if they've asked for it, and allow them to take another run at it or clear up some of the issues if they could possibly do that? I would, I would say we should, should listen to them and give them the opportunity. It doesn't hurt anything.
Yeah, just this one has dragged on for quite a while, and they did, these items were brought to them a year ago, so they knew then, and as Mr. McClure said, some of them have been cleared up, but they haven't cleared up. It's still contrary to the official plan and does not provide any parking for a commercial business. And our, you know, that is part of our thing. Our, our regulations is that all businesses have to provide some parking. What's the rest of council? What's your will? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I'm just, I'm pretty sure I heard Mr. McClure say parking issue, but it was not consistent with provincial policy as well. Two items?
Our official plan.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, to me, two weeks from now, still going to be inconsistent with it, so I'm prepared to make a decision now.
Counsel?
I, I, yes, you're. I too am ready to make a decision, because I have had roughly a year to work on this, and it is, the parking issue is something that is not conforming to our official plan, so I think we can make a decision on this and carry on as recommended.
They can always reapply and go through the whole process again if they don't agree. Yes.
And this would also afford the gentleman, the people, a chance to go to OMBF, or well, the Ontario Land Tributal if they want to. They can carry it on after this. It's not the end for them.
Would you, yes, sorry.
Motion?
Go ahead and read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Cook, that report CEP 5322 re-report to an application to amend the village report Stanley by law 1507, 250 Colburn Street, Jeff and Crystal Ria be received as information, and that council refused the proposed amendment to the village report Stanley by law 1507, as it is inconsistent with the county of Elgin official plan and the municipality of Central Elgin official plan.
Thank you. Would you call the vote then, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
No.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Move on now to the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, the Albertson Drain Request for Improvement. Everyone's read the report. Any questions? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report ICS 2522, re-Albertson Drain Request for Improvement be received as information, and that council appoint Brandon Woodner of Spirit Associates Limited to prepare a report under Section 78 of the Ontario Drainage Act for the Albertson Drain.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the Director of Fire Rescue Services and the monthly alarm activities report. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Armrod? He always gets off so easily. One of these days. Just teasing, right? Would you read the motion, please?
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report FS 1122, re-monthly alarm activities report for September of 2022 be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the Director of Asset Management and Development Services. The first one is the monthly building report. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Parent? Things are certainly still charging right along. Would you read the motion then, please, Mrs. Wilson? Thank you.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report AMDS 2722, re-September 2022 monthly building report be received for information.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the next one is the monthly bylaw report. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
Just one question, and it's in regards to the parking tickets. I'm just wondering, like, I see roughly 13% are canceled. What's the, are the reasons for them being canceled?
Mr. Parent, go ahead.
So you, Madam Mayor, that's a really good question. There's tickets that get issued that, for example, someone may have paid for parking, and it's come to light over the summer that there is a identifier on the parking machines that is on the Precise Park Link app. However, if you go into the HAWK app and put that identifier in, you actually end up paying for parking in a St. Thomas lot. So if someone shows us that and can prove that, we will cancel the ticket. Or if it was identified that they did pay for, were not over their time limit, then we would cancel the ticket.
And there was one that I had that a woman called me, because she paid for parking at, that then said, at the machine, it said it was out of order, so she assumed she hadn't paid. She moved to the next machine and paid there, but it charged her credit card twice. So they canceled, obviously, the first ticket and refunded her the money. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report AMDS 2822, re-September monthly bylaw report be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And the next one is on the paid parking program, a status report. This is something I think we were looking forward to receiving, so. Are there questions or comments before we have the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Crevitts.
I'd just like to thank staff for preparing this report. It's going to be something that will be useful when the next council convenes, so thank you. I don't think we need to discuss it at this point.
I think it's important, though, that it does show a fair profit. It certainly wasn't a break even by any means. We made quite a bit of money toward going in the, in the, you know, toward the berm or parking or whatever.
Yep.
Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
Just curious, over the last couple of weeks, we've had some meetings in discussion on parking. I'm just wondering, I don't, I looked in the report, I didn't see the cost of maintaining parking or enforcing it. I'm just wondering, I know there were a couple candidates threw it out that said it's costing us more to administer than it is for, and I thought that was false. I'm just wondering, do we have any information to say roughly what percentage of this it costs to maintain and manage the system?
It has the revenue, total revenue and total expenses there. Down in the one chart called the parking budget. So the total revenue was 700,537, and then the total expenses were 18843, so we have 519,694 to put in the reserve.
I apologize that I missed that.
No, I, it was, that was the most important part of the information, I think, after some of the things that have been said at public meetings, yes. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I think this is something we, this council needs to brag about, and certainly something that we should be applauding staff. You know, this is the efforts of staff. We tasked staff, we were getting beat up with high taxes and high water rates, and we said, hey, we need ways to, you know, tighten the belt, and staff responded, so this is pretty darn good evidence. So I think council needs to do some bragging, and certainly staff take a bow, because congratulations. And I think we, we need to spread the word, communicate, let the public know, because we've been taking it on the chin, and I think, let's educate the public.
And it is only for so many months a year, and to take in that much income in that length of time, and as Counselor Crevitt's even stated at the public meeting the other night, the percentage of your taxes that would go up if we weren't collecting this. So I really think it's a great thing as well, and I do not see that the businesses in Port Stanley have been particularly harmed by it, but. Yes, go ahead.
You know, I think this is something that we should be flooding media with. Hopefully, staff can do that, but I think probably very appropriate, Madam Mayor, if you made a statement and do some educating to the public. You know, I looked at that, and if we didn't have this, ratepayers have a pretty hefty tax increase.
Yes.
You know, I've said many, many times, if councils make the right decisions, sometimes we fail to communicate. I think this is an opportunity to communicate.
I agree. I'm assuming that we can put a statement out tomorrow, then, Mr. Shipway, on this, on our social media and, whatever way.
Through you, your mayor, if you think that's appropriate, we obviously do what we're asked. I think generally with reports, we put them out and we put them on the agenda. I think especially at this time of year, we want to be cognizant about what corporately messaging we're putting out, but whatever council directs will absolutely assist with that.
I will speak to you after, because I just say that, you know, we're pleased with the results, but.
Well, if, I believe if the mayor makes a statement, speaking on behalf of council, because there's been some false information out there, and I think it's an opportunity to correct it. One more thing, could I ask what the approximate Central Elgin budget is yearly? I think I know the answer. What was our total budget?
To you, Madam Mayor, for parking?
No, just our total budget.
Okay. Ballpark, Central Elgin?
Yes.
Well, I would, I guess, as I pull it up, I would just direct that the entire budget report that the municipality received the financier's officer award for is available online, and it spells out all that information. But just give me a half second and I'll go to it. It's not something I can memorize off the top of my head. Last year, our expenditures, our expenditures excluding capital was 18 million last year. And again, I would just refer persons to the budget report where all that information is completely there, to the point of every single line item for the municipality. That's all available there for everyone. Okay?
Now. Can you have a motion here? If you would read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report AMDS 2922, re-paid parking program status report be received for information.
Vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now at bylaws, and the first two will not be included in the first readings, yes?
Madam Mayor, and I would just note, staff have taken the bylaw 2739 separately. There's a additional motion that needs to be read with that bylaw.
Okay.
Through the planning department, and bylaw 2743, again, I've taken that separately because of the report earlier on the agenda.
Right.
Okay, so the first motion reads, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Fair, that bylaws 2738, 2740, 2742 be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you.
Second motion on those bylaws, Madam Mayor?
Will it also include?
It includes the two drains.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Cook, that bylaws 2733, 2734, 2738, 2740, and 2742 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitt?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the one on the Eagle Ridge Phase Two?
Yes. So there, I'll need a mover and a seconder on the.
Amendment.
On the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rowan, Crevitts. Just reverse the order. Row and Creve, just reverse the order.
Okay, so this is regarding, uh, bylaw twenty-seven thirty-nine, the O P A Amendment Number Twelve.
Yes.
Moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Creve, that council through this resolution requests the Official Plan Amendment Number Twelve to the Municipality of Central Elgin Official Plan, February eighth, two thousand and thirteen, be considered by the County of Elgin as a municipally requested modification to the adopted Municipality of Central Elgin Official Plan dated August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
One more on that one?
So now there'll be a first and a second and third reading on that bylaw, because we're taking it separately?
Right.
Okay? Which is, do we require a move in a second?
We need a mover and a seconder for that one? Okay, I'll take Council Creve and Deputy Mayor Marks.
Thank you. Moved by Council Creve, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-nine be read a first and a second time?
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you.
And then I'm moving a seconder on the final motion on that bylaw?
Now I can take Council Row this time, because all three of them had their hand up. Who would like to second it?
Sure.
Well, okay, Council Fair also put his hand up, so.
Moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Fair, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-nine be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Okay, and now the final one on the two fifty Culveren Street.
So Madam Mayor, we've prepared a motion to receive that bylaw as information because of the refusal recommendation that you passed.
Okay.
Earlier. I'll just need a mover and a seconder on that.
So just to receive it as information, not to pass it? Deputy Mayor Marks? Council Row?
Thank you. Resolution reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Marks, seconded by Council Row, uh, twenty-seven forty-three be received as information.
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair? Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have any, uh, notice of motion? I, that would, I can't imagine we would. Does anyone have any other businesses that they want to bring forward at this time? Nothing? And the motion to move into closed, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Mark, that council proceed as opposed to at seven thirty three P M. In order to address the matter between plan procedure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
God, he's abs.
This is just to go in camera.
I know.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.
He left a little. Now, just come out of closed session, would you read the motion, please, concerning closed session item?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Council Row, that confidential report CS to be received as information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
Do you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay. We have the confirmatory bylaw now, please.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Cook, that bylaw twenty-seven forty-one be read a first and a second time?
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.
Last motion on that bylaw, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Fair, that bylaw twenty-seven forty-one be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Creve?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?[1760.31]